Father, speaking to you in the regular meeting of the City Commission for Beorande City. It is Wednesday, August 9th, 2017, approximately 6:02 PM. Here in Commission Chambers, 5332 East US Highway 83, Beorande City. This time we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Garza, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Ramirez.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to get together to conduct city business. We ask that you guide us, that you help us make decisions that need to be made. We ask you, Lord, that you bless this council, that you bless the people present. We ask that you bless this city. And we ask that you protect our police officers and our soldiers in Antue. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of sin. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one nation, under God, one God.
We'll have roll call and finding a forum, Mr. Reddell.
Thank you, Lord. Mary Andrea La...
Here.
Mary from Texas.
Here.
Commissioner Salinas. He's asking. Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
You have the calls.
Thank you, Mr. Reddell. Next, business and orders, item 1C, public forum. Have A, Adriana Klein, non-payment of portion of rooming client's annual leave. Do we have Ms. Klein?
I don't think she's present here.
Did you say she was or she's not?
No. She's not present.
Okay. The record is she's not present. Next is item B, or C. Item B, Sandra Garza and Tessa Garza have scanned to comment on proposed liquor license for business to be located at 309 Garza Street.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
Mayors and councilmembers. My name is Sandra Garza and I am the Star County Community Coalition. And I'm here to ask if it is in your power to prevent from this liquor license, to give this liquor license to this proposed business. We have come different times to request, and I know there was a misunderstanding in the proposition or the wording in the agenda last time. And I did give out some information on why it is said that we are asking for this to happen. In the past, we asked the planning and zoning department to add to see this scan office as a hospital because it is a treatment facility. Patients go in there to receive treatment and to services because they have substance abuse issues. And we also asked for the library to be considered a school because kids go there, families go there. And I know that they're not, that the library is not a school. But scan is not a hospital. But if it is in your power to prevent more saturation of alcohol in our community, if it is in your power to better our community, then that's why I'm here asking. And the reason I'm asking is because there's so much substance abuse in our community, especially alcohol. And I have over 13 years of experience in the prevention field of substance abuse. And we always get calls to our office asking, "What can we do? What can we do?" My son, their colleague desperate, asking, "My son is doing drugs. My son cannot stay away from drugs. What can we do?" There are people at the scan treatment office, they do help and they do the treatment. But I'm here in prevention, to ask for prevention of this. What can we do? This is what we can do. Prevent more outlets, prevent more of this saturation in our community. And you have the power to do it, and not a specific individual or specific business. No, I'm not asking that. What I am asking is that you be role models so that we can change, to shift this way that we see alcohol, the way we did with tobacco. 20 years ago, people would walk into the stores and smoke, go in the movies and smoke. What can they do it now? No, they can't do it. Why? Because we did something about it. Okay. Another thing is that we tend to say that alcohol is not bad, and it is. We all see it, car accidents, domestic violence. So that is why I'm here asking for you to consider shifting that, to be that shift, the way we did it with the tobacco. And when you're going to build something or you're going to do something, you ask for advice. Right? You ask for advice and expertise. Some of them are experts in that. Well, I'm an expert in prevention, substance abuse prevention. And I am recommending, I'm telling you that this is something that is going to benefit our community by not having more liquor stores, more places where kids can see and buy alcohol. And one more thing. Sometimes we complain about all the things that are happening, you know, the violence and the alcohol, drinking and driving, because we only see the surface, we see the action. But we need to get to the root. And what is the root? Prevention. That is the root. Prevention of the saturation of alcohol in our community. So if I'm asking you today, if it is in your power to limit the accessibility of alcohol, then that's why I'm here asking you to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Next on public forum, we have José Guadalupe Sáenz and Ana Mónica García.
Buenos tardes.
Buenos tardes.
Major y señores consejales. Todos buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Guadalupe Sáenz. Soy ciudadano americano. Soy nacido en esta comunidad de Rio Grande. Estoy aquí para hacerme escuchar y para darles voz a los humillados por la ley racista SB4. Yo, igual que muchos ciudadanos, vivimos trabajando nuestras vidas duro. Siempre estamos muy ocupados, tan ocupados estamos que no sabemos cómo trabajan nuestros representantes. No les piremos cuenta. No sabemos qué leyes aprueban. No sabemos si estas leyes nos benefician o nos perjudican. Hoy estoy unido. Hoy estamos unidos nuestras voces para decir que no queremos la ley SB4 porque es una ley discriminatoria con un perfil racial. Esta ley es una ofensa para nosotros, los latinos. Muestra el odio y la intolerancia de legisladores sin discúpulos. Que se sienten dueños de nuestras vidas y nuestra libertad. Hoy nos unimos para decir que no vamos a regresar al pasado con leyes opresoras. Nosotros somos personas que merecemos respeto. Bien ganado tenemos nuestra libertad. No vamos a permitir que el odio y la violencia persigan a nuestros hijos por ser latinos. Los protegeremos y enseñaremos a respetar a los demás. En este país todos somos iguales y no tiene que haber desigualdad racial. Queremos vivir en armonía. Queremos ser, queremos que nos traten con dignidad. Por eso estamos en esta tarde porque esta ley viola nuestros derechos civiles también, ¿verdad? Y pues hay gente aquí latina que esta ley que habla nada más por ser latinos, con nuestro color. Nos puede parar los oficiales. O por eso estamos ahorita aquí, para que no pase esta ley, la SB4. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Reddell.
Ana Mónica García.
Good afternoon, mayors, mayor and commissioners. My name is Ana García. I'm an American citizen and I'm a resident of Star County. I'm upset with this new law called SB4, which stands for Senate Bill 4. As many citizens for our whole country are still also. In my opinion, SB4 is racist and I'm upset with this new law. I'm going to change it in Spanish. Sabemos que esta ley es parte de las políticas antimigrantes que les ha funcionado muy bien a los republicanos para atraer a los votantes. Los motivos para estar contra esta ley son demasiados y son preocupantes. Los motivos para estar en contra, no son simples paradas de policías para pedir papeles. Esto va más allá. La primera, la ley SB4 va a violar nuestros derechos civiles, humanos y constituciones. Para empezar, no vamos a ser libres de transitar sin que nos pare la policía. La ley SB4 no sabe que los latinos tienen papeles o quién es ciudadano o está ilegalmente. Segunda, la ley SB4 es una ley racista que ofende nuestra dignidad. Tercera, la ley SB4 genera más odio y violencia contra los latinos. La que ya existe. Cuarta, la ley SB4 nos enfrenta entre latinos y divide nuestras comunidades. La quinta, la ley SB4 le da legalidad a cualquier policía de pararte sin que cometas una infracción. Sexta, la ley SB4 genera desconfianza a un indumentado a ser testigo de un delito o a demandar si es víctima. Octavo, la ley SB4 tiene a muchas personas enfermas de miedo. La ley SB4 destruye la economía local. Los negocios están siendo los más afectados. Sus clientes no llegan por agentes policiales. Ten, y última, la ley SB4 acaba con nuestra paz. Nuestra paz social ya no vivimos en armonía y tranquilidad. Debemos tener suficientes razones para estar en contra de esta ley racista y junto con la ayuda de ustedes como pueblo podemos ayudar. Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias, Ms. García. We have D, Melissa Ann Andrade, to comment on proposed liquor license for business to be located at 309 Garza Street.
I hope we get an applause like that. That's hard to follow. Sorry. Good evening, mayor and city commissioners. Thank you for your time. Again, my name is Melissa Andrade and I come before you to reiterate the fact and asking for your consideration and approval on a package store that I am planning on opening. It would involve a TABC off-premise permit. Let me also reiterate that I will abide by all TABC requirements as well as the city's procedures that are necessary in accordance with the laws prior to opening and during opening. I believe you gentlemen know me outside of this room to be a law-abiding individual. I'm simply asking for the opportunity to open a business of my own, which I will employ five employees as well as bring in a projected half million dollar sales revenue, which translates to city taxes. Let me also clear it by saying that I understand operating permits issued by the city are reviewed every year. The requirements I know are not guaranteed. The permits have to be inspected, but I do plan to follow all regulations and be in compliance. With your approval, I will still need to be doing some work. I will have the historic building at the location bought at ToCo fully restored and beautified. I'm planning on investing somewhere around $30,000 to the interior and exterior of the building.
Good afternoon, this is Secretary. Thank you. Chief, just.
She has a cigarette lighter on.
I'm going to go and put my little...
So with all those facts being said, I do understand the opposition's concern with the liquor stores' proximity to their offices. However, I too did my research and looked at statistics in this last month since our last meeting. I've read several articles involving alcoholics and drug addicts and relapses, yet none of the information involved proximity to a liquor store. But I will tell you this. In the nine years that I taught at the high school level, I came across many students. I heard many stories. They were happy, they would come back from the weekend, many successes, but also many problems. And one of them that I recall is many of them coming back from the weekend and stating with their friends, "Hey, I went and I drank on Saturday night with my father, with my uncle, with my cousins and my older brother." So I believe everybody has their opinion and there are the facts, but it does come from the involvement of their home setting as well as them making their own personal choices, like I said in the last meeting. So in closing, I just simply ask for your consideration in my new endeavor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. We have item 1D, departmental reports. Mr. Milan.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners.
Good evening.
What's the progress for some of these projects? Not to say the idea of school is fully finished. They're getting ready to start school within the next couple of weeks. The other general store right here to the west side of town, it's almost complete. There is a couple of smaller subdivision projects being presented to the planning and zoning commission. Two of them on Chato Blanc Road. So that means the original townsite is still, on the left, still being developed. And more projects coming up, professional projects. One last subdivision project.
How does it look out there for both ideas as far as the traffic now that the school will be opening soon and traffic control along that area?
Yes, sir. Well, they have heritage. Obviously, it's got a master plan for that area. There is proposed routes connecting Eisenhower and Modern Lane and FM 3167 with the potential to connect to Alveras Road. Non-project yet, but it's in the plans. So far, Modern Lane is right on the traffic school bus, right turn and stuff. They should have a ground breaking, but Pachanga, I believe, tomorrow will find a ground breaking. Yeah, yes. So far, so good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fernando, Mr. Giver.
Yes, Captain, mayor, councilman.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I want to add a few things to my report. Too often that you're going to have traffic like on Alveras Road maybe briefly soon. We're starting working in it. So we'd like the traffic flow freely on Alveras Road. We create a lot of accidents in those areas. And they're working in this.
So it's Alveras Road and Highway 83?
Yes, sir. Very soon we're going to have a traffic light there. So 83 has to have a stop, okay? And another good thing that we're doing out here is creating sightblocks here on 83 on the east side of town. We're maintaining and cleaning out all those sightblocks. We're almost done with them. So that's looking real nice. And another thing that school PD for me that no parking area in front of Rock Hill and Cox Street. They need a certain amount of feet, no parking. Okay? Too safe to eat, you, the kids. We're having some problems. We're going to be closing the main gate on the front. So we have posted all of this.
So the gate along 83 will no longer be?
And it's shutting down, yes, sir.
Okay, so they'll shut it down in the mornings for different...
They're going to close it for certain hours in the morning while the kids are being dropped off so that they don't access that area. And they're routing everybody to the back. They're going to set up like a horseshoe drop-off. So we're going to need assistance from PD and the school PD also.
So we're going to just find in those areas. We can park them and the other part of the break because we use some parked items involved also. So we'll do a couple of ways. And another school is going to be, I mean, this, I mean, Veterans Cemetery. Veterans Cemetery is going to be on Central West Street. You're going to have to pick, you're going to reroute their traffic also. And we're going to have to pick the empty area by 100, 250 feet mile on Central West Street. They'll serve the area that they're approaching closest with. And bring each improvement as mentioned, a computer area also. You just cross 83. We might send a treatment there also, mayor.
So we're ready for hurricanes?
Hope so. It can be one of nature sometimes.
Not that we are asking for one other, just the rain, that's it.
Right, right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reddell.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Sarah, Mr. Hernandez?
Good evening, mayor, commissioners.
Good evening.
The tourism department, we are currently working on several events. One being hosted at the museum and it will be from September 5th through the 7th. And it's the 50th anniversary of Hurricane Vula. So the kickoff event will be September 5th at 10:00 AM. And on the 6th and the 7th, we'll host you two tardies at the museum. We did something similar last year for this kind of Heritage Month by having the evening events there at the museum and we got a good turnout. So we want to do something in the evening so that we can invite the community to attend because some people work obviously during the day and the evening works out better for it. And we're having our third annual Viva México event on the 6th of September. We're very excited. We're going to have new performances, our contests, Noche Libre. And we've been soliciting sponsorship for that and everything's looking good and we're ready to move forward with that event as well. And as far as October, we have several events lined up for October. Dr. Stanton has reached out. They will be having their Halloween event. We will be having our Unexplained Mysteries Conference on October 28th. And the Paleta Cook-Off is set for October 21st. And I know that Mr. Perez, myself, and Mrs. Guillen have been working with Mr. Christian Julian on that event. So that will keep our October very busy and Halloween and then before you know it will be the holiday. So we're looking forward to all of these events. And also just to notify the public, the Channel 12 has been moved. It's no longer on Channel 1217. It's been temporarily, possibly temporarily moved to Channel 95-12 or 95-17. So if you get any calls or concerns from the community, just let them know that Channel is still up and running, but it's on Channel 95. And this is something that was done through respect of not the city.
So is Mil Mascaras going to be here as well? Is that... The son of... So Santo, Blue Demon, all those...
And they'll be there.
I know who we're back to.
They'll be there to take pictures with everybody. And if you get on the rain, if you want to, there, just let us know.
I'll tell you, see that.
We need to have, we need to get people now, so we can start promoting that.
Get to wear a mask. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernando. Ms. Holt? Hello, Ms. Holt?
Hello.
The month of July, we had 2,627 visitors coming to the library. There is a significant drop from June as people are going on vacations and so forth. But we still have our programs. We had our Breath Program with Aguilay, whose family's reading every day. She committed to read 15 minutes a day for a whole week, period. And that ended yesterday. So each child got a certificate and those that completed the program were given a book badge with some school supplies. So everybody was really happy about that. We did have a small business seminar on social media and using Google with UTRTV Small Business Development Center. We have another one coming up on Thursday, the 11th. And that will be held at the UTRTV campus here in Rohan City. And that one will be on financing if anybody's interested in attending. We also have some things coming up. It's the 30th anniversary for signing up for your library card and that's for the month of September. So we'll have some activities then. We have some coming up with Easter Seals that we'll be bringing forth probably by the next meeting. And we're going to have a Girl Scout Rally. If anybody's interested in joining the Girl Scouts, that will be held at the library on August 15th from 3:00 to 5:00. So we're working on that. And we're also helping the museum with Hurricane Vula for working on its corner for that event.
Are there some sort of auction going on, partner?
Go ahead.
I passed this afternoon and I saw earlier there's some...
We had some panels right outside my office. They were all really rotted out. And so we did have somebody on our building maintenance. We decided to go in and take care of it now that we have funds available. But they were all very rotten. We did take pictures of them.
I passed by there this afternoon and I saw some crap going on there.
And also right outside of my office, we have some fake doors and it just had a glass on there. So it was always very, very hot, really uncomfortable. So what they did is they added some insulation and they boarded it up. Those were fake doors anyway. So this afternoon I could already feel the difference.
Is the 3D printer being utilized?
The 3D printer, we're working on some classes for that. Also, the first week in October, Governor Abbott declared power-up at your library and he wants us to talk about all the technology that we have. So we'll do one day by the way. Our website is up and running, rdlibrary.com or .org. We've completely revamped it and we've been able to add a lot of our online databases on there. A lot of research tools that will be very helpful for anybody that has a library card. And so anyway, so that week, it's the first week in October, we'll be inviting the public for the different events we have.
Thank you, Ms. Holt.
Mr. Sáenz? Good evening, mayor. Mr. Sáenz?
I just want to bring up that I got together with Christian from Channel 12, made a commercial for the residents of Beorande on the British Bags and bulky items so that they could know how to throw, how to pack all this stuff. It's out there on Channel 12, so I don't know if you've seen the commercial.
I've seen it, sir. You did a great job.
Thank you. And then I got another thing, the vector control tracking from last month, we got the results back. Like I always said, that we have the vector that has the Denge and the Zika and West Isles, but everything came out negative on mosquitoes, so that's a good plus.
Have we had a lot of complaints about mosquitoes?
Actually, it was on the west side. It's the creek that's behind, uh, West Ridge, one that goes through, that, that's the creek that we're having conflict.
Kiel's Creek.
Yeah. So, other than that, that's, that's fine.
Any questions, Mr. Science?
Thank you.
Just, if we're ready again for continued weather, hurricanes, obviously there's a few out there, but we're ready, should that be the case, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Brown?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
The only thing I have to report is that I've gone ahead and scheduled to open enrollment for the volunteer insurance services for the employees, and that is scheduled for September fifth to the eighth, and also TML Health Insurance Open Enrollment, and that is scheduled for just one day, September the sixth. And this is all to be able to, be able to take effect for October first. That's the only thing I've got to report on my end.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Guillen?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening, Ms. Guillen.
In addition to the work in advancing our project negotiations, we do have a couple of events on the calendar this month, as Ms. Holtz reiterated earlier. The Financial Statement Analysis Workshop will be held at the Public Library on August tenth. We are also looking forward to a grant opening and ribbon cutting for Riedera's Collision Center on West eighty-three, that is on August fourteenth. On August fifteenth, we are preparing for our EDC meeting and public hearing on work plan projects for this upcoming fiscal year. And we are also participating with the downtown business, Rio Brewery, who relocated to Main Street, and they're having a re-grant opening at their new location on August eighteenth. And then lastly, we have, and we're working with Marina Electric, as I mentioned last month, on their groundbreaking ceremony for their new location, off FM thirty-one sixty-seven. And of course, all those invitations will be sent out to you as well as posted on our social media and public website.
So that EDC newsletter, and it was exceptional as far as the information that's on there, have we distributed that to other, whether it's a newspaper or the Access Channel or?
We do ask for individuals to subscribe to our newsletter, and it is available by link on our website. We could work with local media to make sure that they have access and receive it.
Excellent information.
It says it should go out every first of the month, and there are some events that we capture, and some that we miss because of the, you know, publishing deadline, but for the most part, we try to get everything on there as we can. But I'll make sure we work on getting that.
Excellent information that's on there.
I'll let Ms. Gomez know. Thank you.
Chief Castillo?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Chief. Uh, we, this weekend, we had a back-to-school, the annual back-to-school softball tournament, and kind of pretty good, it ended almost at four o'clock in the morning. The crime-saunderers program, with that, they made over two thousand dollars that would be valued by incomes for the needy before the school starts. So that was a good turnout, it was a good success. We also have been awarded a hundred thousand dollars to work our local border security program, which will start in October of this upcoming fiscal year. And currently, we're actually working the Operación Stone Garden, which was eight, nine thousand dollars worth, so that's what we'll be working on. Questions?
The transition to the new phones, has that already been placed or?
It's certainly been transitioned, the eight, the eight-ten, the ones that we're getting for the option, they should be in in about maybe four, four weeks, so we'll have to tell them when that comes in, and see when, maybe get them all set up and, it's under control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Ribeiro?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ribeiro?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Uh, just to elaborate a little bit on what Mr. Hernandez has already shared with you, on the fifth at ten a.m., we are having the unveiling there at the Kelsey Bass Museum of the Candace Exhibits, and we are having guest speaker, Tim Smith, chief meteorologist from Channel Five, will be there. Still waiting for some further confirmations from Dr. Ramida's family. And on the sixth, Rick Diaz has confirmed, so Channel Five, Poni Henten, will be there at the Tarriada from five to eight in the evening. On the seventh, Telamundo reached out to us, and they will be coming in to do a segment for their weather forecast from the Kelsey Bass Patio during the preparedness of Tarriada that we'll be having then. Also, I'm very grateful to the United States Army. Today, Sergeant First Class Marrero from the recruiting station in Nishen brought us for their cots for one of the recreations of a scene from the Jim nineteen sixty-seven during Hurricane Vula at a Coca-Cola company. So outside of the community, we are reaching out, and we are receiving assistance to be able to carry our exhibit decoration. We are having the monitor, place one of our articles regarding the Vula event. They will let me know when it's coming out, so I'll keep posted, and the prior as well. And I'd like to thank the library for working very diligently on your activities for the Kids Corner. And if there are no questions, that's it.
I'd like to, just to congratulate you on the great job you do with the General Sanchez exhibit and the address, that was a very, very good job that you have there.
Thank you very much.
Very impressive.
He's wearing boots now, we found his sport. So he's a long, senior for the Vula exhibit.
I'd like to hit the exhibits and the memorabilia that you have there, strongly, you know, reach out to the public to draw by the museum and see that's something impressive to see.
Thank you, appreciate that, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ribeiro. Chief Reyes, come back? No? Ms. Science here?
Chief Francis, please, for the unit.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The Public Agility Department is working, currently working on the West Loop Project to give water pressure to the ice and holo for the Gran Cielo Apartments. It has, it has become a problem itself along the way, we have counter issues, but working together with Rio Delta, we've managed, you know, to bypass several areas, our water lines, and still, you know, we'll, we'll get there, you know, we just need a little few extra issues that have come along, and hopefully by next week, we will give the pressure to Gran Cielo so they can do the groundhoging.
By next week?
Uh, Monday, actually, we are, we have a meeting with the SCADA system. The, the people are in charge of our tank renovations, and that's the way they control our water system. And they are working on to give us the direction, a better direction, how the water flow system works to that area. Because right now, we're encountering, finding lines that we didn't know they were there. So that's what we're trying to come about, and Mr. Gilbert Heinz will help us, you know, and Gilbert Rio Delta will help us, you know, work it out to give the pressure to us better.
We are working on a map of all the lines.
Yes, there's a plan and a way to map as they discover, right now as they're working, and then there'll be a project to go around town and making sure we document all the pipes and the different sizes and where the valves are and so on and so forth.
Yes, working with Rio Delta as well on that, you know, we're mapping as, they come along, you know, discovering that valve is here that we didn't know. So Rio Delta and our firm, and I think it's on to what we're working on that, you know, to identify what sizes of water lines run and where the valves are at, because most of the valves, when we've done projects years back, that the paving, they were covered and they were never uncovered, you know, so that's, like now with this issue's coming about, we've encountered, you know, founding valves here and there, so we are identifying them and mapping them.
One of the valves that was uncovered was halfway open, as an example. They're very close on the water pressure, they're at thirty-plus pounds?
Thirty, yes.
They need to be at thirty-five. So they're just troubleshooting what the last issue is, so that can be solved.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Chief Reyes? He's hiding. Way, way back there.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners.
It's good to have an EMT very present, sir, so, thank you, sir.
Oh, thanks, sir, please, I'm definitely not there, I determined the job. Uh, the lady's okay, she got comfortable, she should do it. Yesterday and today, we had a mitigation class that we took. Uh, we're trying to develop a plan as a multi-jurisdiction plan for a mitigation for the county. So we completed the class today, hopefully we can start working on that plan real soon with the help of something different in the county. Hopefully, we could comply that, because that's what the state's requiring now. For each county, we have a plan in place, it's a multi-jurisdiction or individual, so we decided to make a multi-jurisdiction plan.
And the jurisdiction covering what?
Uh, mitigation for hurricanes, many has to do with disaster, so we have certain individuals, actually directors and employees from the city, that are gonna participate in the committee, decide what to mitigate for the city, areas that we have to fix, whether it's infrastructure or roadways or whatever it is, so it can help in the non-running case of any recession we have.
When you said multi-jurisdictional, are we referring to different communities in this, or what?
Entities.
How many entities as far as?
It includes City of Roma, Escoares, Starr County, and ourselves.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other department reports?
Good time, Matt. Chief Silvia?
No, I'm looking at Mr. Cantu.
Well, it's together with Mr. Cantu and I, and myself, and I know with staff members and Mr. Perez, we've been working on the budget, we already have a calendar going. We do have our first meeting next week for the tax rate, proposed tax rate. We hope we do have the budget filed by this Friday, and the calendar will start, as you all know, there's several meetings, very big sensitive timeline there, so by the thirteenth of September, we should have the adopted tax rate and the adopted budget.
Very good.
Anything else?
That's it.
Any, any other department head? Department head? Moving on to item two, consent agenda. It's letter A, approval of departmental travel request, B, approval of minutes from previous meetings, and C, approval of action taken at the meeting of the Kelsey Bass Museum and Event Center, commissioned held on July nineteenth, twenty seventeen. Commissioners?
If there are no questions or corrections, I move that we approve the items, consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consent agenda. I have a second by Commissioner, Commissioner Garsa. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, Business and Orders, item three A, ordinances. Letter A, second, reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty seventeen dash four to abandon the alley located within block seven of the Corrected Doino North Grammar School subdivision of record at volume one, page ninety-five of the Starr County map records.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is the second reading at the first reading we presented the map. It is an alley that was not open, it does not have any utilities. The developers is, or the owners looking at consolidating the lots into one track for commercial development to step. And so you can hear, I've looked at the site, and we all are recommending it, it's feasible.
We have a recommendation, we have a motion.
That's a move that we approve?
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramida, second by Commissioner Garsa, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. If no one objects, I would like to move over to item seven A, contracts and agreements, letter A, discussion and possible action to approve the inter-local agreement with the city of Laredo for E-nine, or nine-one-one, Public Safety and Answering Point Services, PSAP. An objection, let's move on to item seven A. Reyes, we have somebody here representing. Chief?
Uh, Mayor, Commissioner, this is the, the local agreement to help nine-one-one, that's for the equipment that we let it launch to them, and it's basically to follow their rules or guide nine-one policies by reporting and how to use equipment and so forth. That's what they cover.
And we've had multiple issues with the nine-one-one, has that, have those been resolved?
They're, I just spoke to the administrator, and what they're trying to do for this upcoming grant is secure some funding, about two hundred thousand dollars, to actually implement some type of system that will rotate the telephone companies, if one goes down, just to the other, it's like a circuit type of, it's more of a, a work order. So that's what they're working on, and hopefully that's what's gonna happen. So that, that should be the cause, the, the fix to the issue. The, the problem is that the.
Is there a local issue, Chief, or?
No, I think the, this is actually somewhere up on the east side of Northern County or up north, it was not here. You know, we've had this issue with like every month, month and a half, so that's prompted them to come up with a different situation. Has nothing really to do with nine-one-one, it's just that they're in contract with nine-one-one. There's been a fiber optic, and, you know, I think that's what the problem is, it takes a while to find out what the issue is, but we still haven't gotten it to work. Um, they transferred this to another company, another agency that's working, and we transferred the call, we had to send somebody over if they could be aware of our, of our areas, and the call was transferred, they were there, and we're still dispatching our, so the service has not really interrupted, it just moved to another station. First of all, they're trying to, they need the media.
We have not been able to get the details as to what they caused the interruptions, but it's been happening about once a month.
Or, yes.
And, and what I like to consider is that we go, we need to follow or set up a process to determine that quickly, because it is costing us money. Every time that happens, we have to send somebody to go handle the calls in Sapata.
We've done that.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a minimal interruption, but there's a cost associated to it.
Still, there is a cost.
Yeah, so we're not, it's not that easy to figure out where the problem is and what caused it. So, but I don't know who we need to communicate with.
I was trying to find, look up on this, last time, the, the, didn't really have that information even when we talked about it, but I'll follow up on it.
I mean, and along those lines, we should look at the agreement, saying if you're gonna have the, as many interruptions that are costing us money, there should be some cost recovery consideration.
That would be the follow-up question, how do we recuperate those?
Right, because it is costing us time, personnel, need to go out there.
I have a question, Chief, just to clarify, when somebody calls nine-one-one, where's the calls go to exactly? Does it go to counties, it goes to cities, it goes where?
We have a switch in the, in the distance, and if, for whatever reason, something's going on, we can transfer it to another agency. So that's what they've done, you know, they've transferred to the county or another agency, so they can pick up the calls and, you know, then advise us. But what's going on when, when nine-one-one moves down, our regular lines do work, we have a landline at the PD, so the calls are rerouted to Sapata. Before we get there, they're still sending the calls to our landlines, and that's how we're picking them up, and we're sending our people up to the calls. So they're really not, not, in the, the downtime's not really that much because of the way it works, but, you know, it could be a problem because at some point, if you don't find out what happened, you know, that, that's, that's the downtime. And you haven't had that yet, but we're trying to get that fixed, or, you know, nine-one-one's trying to get that together, so, you know, that won't happen. You know, I don't think it has anything to do with nine-one-one per se, but like now everything's going with fiber optics, and that carries a lot of, of information, and that's what's happening.
Definitely, let's follow up and see what we can do to address that, that concern. Certainly, it's been tolerated once a year maybe, but so far it's been once a month, and that's just, that's too.
Since that's been around, we started having this problem a few years ago, and it never used to happen.
Okay. Let's see what we can do about it, or what do we need to contact, or who do we need to contact regarding that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right, do we have a motion at this time, is there seven A?
Or more.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the inter-local agreement with the city of Laredo, Commissioner Garza. I have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. No one objects, let's get back to item three B. Objection, it's three B, first reading and approval of ordinance number twenty seventeen dash five, amending the budget of for fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Mayor, Commissioners, we are ending, uh, once with the ending of this fiscal year, uh, September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. I think it is of no use to the whole region, although we do see the city and the county, uh, healthy economy has had a downfall, and so our sales tax has gone down, uh, at least by seven percent. So, and due to those sources revenue going down, we've had to adjust and make up, uh, on some of other sources of revenue. And fortunately, we have been able to come through in permits and fines, in, uh, part B registration fees, trying to fill up the gap, but not completely, so we've had to now move funds from our enterprise cost annihilation to make a difference. We do have, uh, any other practice demo?
And staff recommends?
Yes, sir.
We entertain a motion at this time? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Garza.
Second motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, uh, business and orders, item four. Uh, number four, resolutions, letter A, discussion and possible action approving resolution twenty seventeen dash fifteen, addressing SB four. Four A. We have the resolution before you. Should we have it?
Yes, Mayor.
We're going to. And the resolution?
Yes, Mayor, we previously discussed this, uh, it reflects what the mayor and the commission had spoken about, um, and, uh, basically stating that, uh, the commission and the mayor is not in agreement with SB four, but, uh, with the agreement of the language in SB four. At this point, uh, the decision was taken to, to pass this resolution and, uh, for financial reasons, whatever reasons, uh, not join the actual lawsuit. But this resolution will, will address the concerns the mayor and commission has regarding the, the decision language that they can go.
Thank you, Mr. Lugo. Need further discussion on this? We entertain a motion at this time?
That's a move, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash fifteen. I have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And four A.
Question?
This time, I'll go ahead and read the resolution, where our Senate Bill Four was filed in Texas Legislator and passed both the Texas House and Senate, signed by Governor Abbott into law on May seventh, twenty seventeen. And barring any injunctive relief granted by the courts, will become effective September first, twenty seventeen. And whereas on May seventh, twenty seventeen, Texas Attorney General Ken Paxton filed a lawsuit against Travis County, uh, Sheriff Hernandez, the Austin Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and the Mexican-American League Defense and Education Fund, seeking a declaration that Senate Bill Four is unconstitutional, Texas versus Travis County. Um, and whereas, other Texas municipalities, including among others, El Cenizo, San Antonio, Austin, El Paso County, La Jolla, have in return filed lawsuits against the state of Texas, challenging the constitutionality of Senate Bill Four. And whereas the city of Rio Grande City is committed to preserving the safety and welfare of all its residents and visitors, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city commission do not agree with the divisive language expressed by many in favor of Senate Bill Four, do not agree with many of the terms listed in Senate Bill Four, and will continue to comply with all state and federal laws to preserve the safety and welfare of all Rio Grande City residents and visitors. Passed and approved this ninth, or the ninth day of August, twenty seventeen. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you. Next, uh, next business in order is item four B. Discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash sixteen, approving the submission of a grant application for the RDC body armor program to the office of the governor. Four B. Hello, T, once again.
Yes, sir. The Texas, the Texas legislature, it's legislature, um, citizen's identity grant award for, uh, uh, private body armor for, uh, accomplishment. And, uh, originally, we needed to, to rush to submit, uh, that application. We are applying for the, uh, one body armor vest for every, which is offered on the twenty ninth. It costs us, uh, the fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, to, uh, purchase that body armor. And if we do get that, uh, grant award, it's fully reimbursed for it. Just have to pay for, for, uh, to get it done.
And it's a grant for fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand or a hundred.
Five hundred? We have a motion to approve. I have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, uh, business in order is item three C. Discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash seventeen to initiate proceedings with El South Water Supply Corporation to accept the CCN for the housing project located at eleven ninety-eight North Charco Blanco Road.
Mayor, Commissioners, we have been approached by, uh, the Strattland Housing Authority, they've been experiencing some problems, and they have had communications with El South Water Supply, who is their supplier. And after several meetings and discussions, it seems they consented with the consensus agreement that, uh, we, uh, initiate the city to have that portion of the CCN transferred to the city. At this point, we would, most of the work would be on behalf of El South Water Supply. Since there is no exchange, it's just a transfer, so this resolution authorizes that to start, they could go up to the point where El South would have to submit their application to the Public Utility Commission. They, uh, they know that they still have to work with their funding entities to seek approval. Uh, so we are issuing, we'd like to have the authority to initiate this.
Well, this is just to get it started.
Yes, sir. Because we can move and meet, and we just, we have the, uh, necessary water to provide to them, but until they make the application to the Public Utility Commission, you know, that gets approved, then it can have the actual transfer.
On the transfer?
If we move on this, do, uh, we still need to wait for approval on their side, from, uh, from their funding agencies.
Yeah, yes, sir.
But doesn't, doesn't matter what we do down here, it all comes back to what, uh, the funding agencies say.
Well, we have to accept it at this point.
Yes.
It's still an issue.
Yes. El South does have some, um, grants and loans with the federal, the TCUSDA, and so they need to, uh, secure their-
Make sure that they're not-
Yeah, because they did, they do have this account as pledges on those, you know, obligations, and they need to make an assessment, if it will hinder their financial-
And is it gonna be under that portion?
At this point, this is a-
Of the CCN?
Yes, it's just a transfer. It's not an exchange. I know we've also been talking about an exchange in another section, but those, that's rolling.
There's gonna be a cost associated to us, for the city, at the, and if so, how much?
At the point that, uh, it becomes necessary for the mapping, the cost really should be on the part of the deposter. We're just accepting it.
Our, our cost would be associated with the hookup. You know, where we switch lines.
We tap into that.
And we're right next door already, right?
We actually already, we actually already, uh, provide fire services to the housing authority.
Is that whole triangle under CCN?
Yes, it starts from ice and power.
Do you anticipate any other costs associated with it?
None of this.
All right. And staff recommends, okay, have a motion to, to approve.
That's a move, Mayor.
I have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, uh, business in order is item five, planning, letter A, discussion and possible action on request for a wine and beer retailer's off-premise license by Melissa Andrade for property located at three oh nine North Garza Street, Suite B.
Mayor, Commissioners, uh, the item, back to the agenda, after, uh, research, led by the State Department and myself, we found out that the, uh, the item did not need a variance due to the library is not, which under PAA in order to city ordinance as a school. So therefore, the item meets the existing ordinance, including ninety-six, five, six, six, two thousand seven, fifteen, two thousand nine, dot four, two thousand eleven, dot one. It's an off-premise license at three oh nine North Garza Street.
So it meets all the requirements?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion.
Motion two?
That's a, that's a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza, and a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next business in order is item five B, discussion and possible action on request for wine and beer retailer's on-premise license by Elsa Barrera for business located at two ninety-eight West Second Street.
Yes, uh, Mayor, Commissioners, this, uh, business owner has a bird's grill. They're passing their hours. It was, this item was approved by the Design and Solid Commission at the regular meeting at the end of July eleventh, two thousand seventeen. And again, it does meet the existing city ordinance. This is for an on-premise license.
On this one, I did notice on the application, item thirteen, uh, it was located within a thousand feet from a private school. What private school is it?
There is no private school.
I mean, because on the application, it, it does, am I reading that correctly, or?
The comment, or?
Page two.
Page two of what?
Two oh five.
Page two oh five on that one. So is the answer yes, or is the answer no on this one?
Not that we know of. We're not aware of any public school, or private school within the area.
Not that we know of.
Not that we know of. I think it's just, uh, the way, um, they made a mistake when they filled it out. As far as we know, there is no school within a thousand feet in that area.
Mayor, it meets all the requirements, I make the motion.
Okay. So it meets all the requirements?
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza. I have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next is item five C, discussion and possible action on request for beer retailer's off-premise license by is that, uh?
Bragoso.
Bragoso Investments, for property located at six oh five West Main Street.
Yes, uh, Mayor, Commissioners, again, this item came back due to an actual, apparently, application. They have stated before that they were within, uh, three hundred feet of, uh, public schools or hospitals, and they're not. And they submitted the actual, the corrected application. Like I said before, all these, uh, items before we bring them to, to all their literally studied, and we will, the measures will make sure that turn that out by one or two feet. There has to be over a thousand feet. And it was approved by the Design and Solid Commission, which is perfect.
And the same thing, it's all ordinances?
Yes.
All right. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza.
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, uh, business in order is item six, City Managers Report. Letter A, presentation by Jay, how do you pronounce the last name?
Doge.
Doge, all right, of Texas Coalition for Affordable Power TCAP, regarding TCAP's proposed electricity pricing for a five-year term.
I cast these out. If you hold them there, if you can look at it at your, uh, leisure, but I will refer to some of the things in there as they go along. First of all, um, my name is Jay Doge. I'm the Executive Director of Texas Coalition for Affordable Power, which also is TCAP, is the acronym. You all are members of TCAP, have been since, I think, two thousand and seven, if I'm not mistaken. You're under a current contract for electricity through the end of this calendar year. TCAP was formed, uh, right after the legislature decided to deregulate the retail electric market. And the response to that was, there was a provision in the law that allowed for, uh, government, local governments, to come together in what we call aggregation entity. It's all, the technical name is political subdivision corporation. That's a pretty true statement, you. And it allows for them to procure electricity for themselves, not your citizens, but your city operations. You can do it for your citizens, but it's a real convoluted way of, of trying to do it, and the, uh, the industry, the electric industry made sure that it was so convoluted that nobody would, it wouldn't work. Uh, but getting back to, uh, to TCAP, it's a nonprofit corporation. Uh, it's made up of some hundred and seventy, uh, mostly cities, but some, uh, about a dozen, uh, special districts, and we've got a, a few, uh, housing authorities in it as well. And we, uh, they're the ones, we're the ones, that decide, uh, who the board director is. There's a fifteen-member board director that each member collects. Uh, we require that there be members from all of the different sizes, large users, middle-sized users, small users, we even have some at-large members. And, and we require that there be at least one person on the board that, that's there to represent, uh, it, the four R-COT zones. The west zone, the south zone, the, uh, Houston zone, and the north zone, to make sure there's that diversity of size and diversity of, of, of geography, uh, so that all those viewpoints can be taken into consideration. And, and they run for two-year terms, staggered terms. And they decide it, they, they meet about six times, about every two months. Uh, and they talk about all different issues, and everybody, uh, whether they're a member, uh, whether they're a board member or not, can attend the meetings, uh, they can listen to it and participate on a conference call, and they can ask questions and participate in those discussions just as if they were a board member. They just can't vote unless they're a board member. But they, uh, they participate in the discussion, so it's a very transparent organization. I don't know of any electric provider, uh, in this state, maybe even in the country, that allows, uh, their customers, uh, to attend their board meetings, or be on their boards. Maybe they allow some of them, but they, we allow anybody that's a member to be on, uh, to participate. We serve about, like I said, a hundred and seventy different political subdivisions. Uh, I talked about the board, uh, we've had a number of south zone members over the past, uh, currently the president and the vice president of the TCAP board are both from the south zone. One is from Corpus Christi, uh, one is from, uh, Kingsville. Our treasurer is from, uh, Victoria. And there's been a number of people that have been on the board over the years, uh, representing Carlingian and Alice and, and Fafurias and, and all of them, so south zone is, is sort of represented very well. As I mentioned, transparency and transparent governance is very important. Uh, board membership, I mentioned, equal voting, uh, nonprofit. We also return, uh- I mentioned, equal voting, uh, nonprofit, we also return, uh, extra monies to our members, we have a provision in our contract that we had, uh, with our providers that if, there's a ban, that if the price of, of natural gas goes below a certain point, they have to refund us some of that money. Uh, if it goes above it, we have to give them back. Since two thousand and ten, we've only, uh, had to give any money back once, all the rest of the times, uh, we've collected it, so it reflects, I think, uh, how well our consultants have, uh, have represented us in the contract negotiations. And, and the reason why, uh, we wanted, cities wanted to come together, uh, was they wanted to hire their own experts, they wanted to have their own consultants, energy consultants, uh, utility attorneys, and they have represented us ever since the beginning of TCAP, and they've done a marvelous job, uh, the legal counsel for, uh, for example, for TCAP is Jeffrey Gay, and I don't know if you know him or not, but Jeffrey is the one who, uh, watched, watched out for the cities when TXU was going through bankruptcy recently, and, and made sure that cities were, were well represented and, and the, uh, there were two times he was successful in persuading the Public Utility Commission that suitors for, to take over, uh, the, the TXU system, uh, would not get awarded that, uh, that prize unless they complied with certain positions that were looking out for the customers. And, and the commission listened and, and agreed with that, and so the third suitor now, I think, is, is Warren Buffett, and it looks like his group, uh, Berkshire Hathaway is, is probably the one that's gonna wind up with it, and it looks like because they agreed to pretty much everything that the cities and other interested parties to that negotiation and, and the PBC were agreed to. And I, and I go through that because I wanted to, I wanted to emphasize, we think a lot of our consultants, uh, they've been there a long time, they're not a revolving door like other, uh, industri- uh, industry providers that are there one year and on the net, uh, they've been there, uh, they've negotiated great contracts and great, great issues. Incidentally, the, the refunds that I mentioned to you, we do pretty much every year, uh, and-
How to receive refunds?
Ancillary service refunds, yes, that's a provision in the agreement that we had that I described earlier that allows us to collect monies when the price of, of electricity goes below a certain point. And, uh, I was around to fifteen different cities, you're the fifteen for today, uh, passing those checks out, they are refunded based on, on the usage, and we've been doing that since two thousand and ten, and we've refunded about thirteen million dollars to our members since then. So, uh, the reason I'm here today is you all have a contract that's about to expire, uh, the contract rate is, uh, was negotiated back, started in two thousand and nine, and then there was a renegotiation that lowered the rate, uh, for a small amount in two thousand and eleven, but the contract, as you might imagine, uh, nobody's going to renegotiate, renegotiate a price unless they get something in return, and that return was to extend the contract another three or four years, and that's the part of the contract that's still out there. So, you all, and, and, and not just you, but, but the TCAP members had, had, uh, contracts with a negoti- a renegotiated rate, but as we guys, prices started falling during twenty fifteen particularly, and into sixteen, um, the, I went around and talked to an awful lot of city officials and, and hearing the comments at our board meetings, uh, the, the theory was, we're gonna wait until the end of this, this year and, and get the best deal and, and look for the best, best pricing in the market that would start on January first two thousand and eighteen, and we'd go for five years, and that's what they did, lots of our members have already done that, you all haven't yet, I hope you will, uh, I can tell you that the, the pricing is as low in the, in the South Zone right now as it's ever been since the start of electric deregulation.
What is the current rate?
The current rate right now for your, your, uh, electricity under the contract is, uh-
Seven point-
Seven, yes, this is the energy rate now, this doesn't include the transmission and distribution charge, that's a seven point four eight five cents per kilowatt hour. The market right now, uh, that's available, and you could, you could get it now if you wanted to lock in on it, is, is, uh, three point five seven one, it went up just a hair since Friday, but that's as low as it's ever been. Now that's again, the energy charge, that doesn't include the regulated part, which is the ATP charge as well. But with that comparison, the, uh, the savings to your city, uh, would be, uh, based on your kilowatt hour usage, I think using a twenty sixteen figure, uh, would be about a thirty percent energy reduction savings, that includes the transmission and distribution, uh, piece, but for the energy charge, you actually have fifty-three percent savings. So that's, that's what this price today, that, for the, the market that ended today would get you if you wanted to do that. What I'm recommending to you, if, if you're so inclined, is in your packet, and this is what we've done with a lot of our members, is, is there is what I call a participation resolution, and the way it works is it's, you know, I, I know that, that a lot of people would, uh, we've talked to, want, want to do RFPs and stuff, but there's some downsides there. The downside, the biggest downside, well, the good thing is, I guess you get a lot of, you've got a lot of bidders hopefully, um, but the problem is it takes a while, and it's just getting snapshots of everybody at a certain time. The, we're doing right now, working with, uh, the North Texas Toll Authority, which operates the toll roads up in North Texas, and they're bound and determined to go through a, a bid process, and it's been like three months now, uh, and they've already gone through one, and they, quite honestly, followed it up because they had people prepare it that didn't know what they were doing with respect to the energy market, I think they thought they were selling like widgets, and, and the energy market is, is different in the sense that, uh, for example, if the, the quote, the quote, I, the, the, the price I quoted you today is only good for twenty-four hours, because there's a market out there, and that market can change, it changes every fifteen minutes with that market's effect. So, uh, if you were to pass that participation resolution, and, which, you know, I'll explain in a minute what it, what it would do, uh, and you all said, I wanna, I wanna execute right now based on that price, and you signed it tomorrow, we can get you that, you can lock it-
What other fees are included in this, you mentioned we're at a seven point four eight five, and you said there are other fees-
There's one other fee that-
Which are?
That, that is charged by TCAP, and that's called, what's called an aggregation fee.
Which is what?
We just basically, if it is point zero 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 eight cents per kilowatt hour, that's eight tenths of a millimeter, and I can tell you that, I don't know that anybody that charges anything, anything bigger than that, I mean, uh, smaller than that.
Okay, is there other fees as well besides that?
Not for us, now those are, those are the-
There's two in a sense, the electricity portion and-
And electricity portion includes the, uh, uh, the, the retail electric provider who does the billing, and, and then there's the energy charge from the, from the wholesale, wholesale, in our case, we've been using NextEra, but, uh, that's, that's it. The prices you've been-
And there's no other fees?
Membership.
There was a membership?
Well, the, the, well, no, you all are already a member, so we, you know, that's long since-
So, uh, can I ask you, I mean, uh, the price has been lower than half since we've had it set over seven cents, uh, for, to me, it's a long time. Why was it not at that time, I know you waited for the, the new year, but why would you not try and get a better deal such, in such a big drop, and pass it on to customers? Uh, because, uh, looking at what it's, it is now, and it's been for a while, you know, it's been averaging a little over four, it's lately come down, I-
It got under four in the first part of twenty sixteen.
Okay, to me, that's a long time, and, and in a year's time, you're already telling us, your savings is two hundred plus thousand, that's huge for a small city like us.
True.
I mean, so why would you wait so long to go and maybe renegotiate a contract to pass on those savings?
Well, first of all, the renegotiation, if, if you're talking about for the last two years of the contract, for example, um, that would involve, as I, as I mentioned earlier, that would involve going to the provider and saying, look, uh, can we get, can you knock off a cent, can you knock off two cents? And what they do is, they're not gonna do that for nothing.
Mm-hmm.
You, what they're gonna do is, they're gonna say, alright, we'll give you, we'll knock off a cent, we'll knock off two cents, like they did in twenty eleven, but they wanted extra years at the end of the contract, and those extra years would be at a price that have, would have a premium for the law, the revenue that they basically renegotiated down, and that would spread that out over future years. But what you can do, what you're doing now is, when January first, twenty eighteen comes, you're gonna get that, that, that rate, whatever you negotiated for, for that, and that's the, the, the rate that I mentioned to you today, or at some future day. And, uh, let me talk a little bit about the, the participation resolution and why I think it's better than the, the RFP.
So would this, excuse me, just trying to get me clear.
Okay.
So this would take place or be in effect till twenty eighteen?
It would start on January first, twenty eighteen, with the next bill.
Can you lock in the price now?
But you can lock in the price till now, but, but it would go into effect, the, on the kilowatt hours that would be used after January first, and we're proposing a five-year agreement, uh, that would run through twenty twenty-two. So you could, point is, you can lock in that price now, but it doesn't go into effect until January first.
Twenty-two.
But you get the full discounted, I mean, that's probably a bad word to use, but the full low market price that's there now, and, and, uh, and you don't have to extend anything or get some, something that, some price that lingers on from the past, start at that, basically, two, three and a half cents.
And help me understand why we would have to wait to start till the first of twenty eighteen, why not, let's say, once we blew it, okay, start now?
Because, because, because when the contract is made with the provider, they went into the market at that time, that's when the market was set, and, and so if they, uh, if suddenly we said, oh, we want an early term, okay, we've had that question from people. Problem is, that that provider has hedged and gone into the market and got those, 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 that, basically, that load at that price, and so they're gonna come looking for us and meeting our, our net members and say, hey, you owe us the difference in what I would have gotten at that price back in twenty eleven, uh, so the, the bottom line is, you know, sort of, uh, the-
The contract.
Contract law one oh one is, the, the damages is the benefit of the party.
Right, but I mean, obviously, they're already making a profit because it's a lot less, I mean, they're willing to go three point five seven one is what I hear you, and that could change between now and then, I mean, it could fluctuate, go up, but it's already being-
But they're already obligated, right, for those, for, for, until through the end of December of this year, that's the benefit.
And the fee would be the same under the three point five seven one, the point zero 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 eight six?
That's set by the board.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, but let me explain, that could change from year to year, but, but it hasn't ever gone over one mill, um, it, it has gone as low as two tenths of a mill as recently as two years ago. The board, remember, the board is the one that sets that, and the board is made up of fifteen people like you that are sitting there representing their cities.
So we could-
So they're not likely gonna, gonna, gonna create some-
So even if we've signed a contract with you, the rate's gonna change because of that board? Year to year, possibly?
They can, they can, they can set the aggregation fee.
Wow.
But, but, again, they're the one, they're all city employees and city officials, and they have, they're, you know, they're sitting there and they're knowing, and so that's why they're, they, they look at that, they're not going to just adopt any of that.
So we're just locking in the rate, that's it?
Yes.
You're not locking in what the board can set?
Well, the board has already said, it's, next year it's gonna be eight tenths of a mill.
For a year?
They've already done it.
But that's for a year.
They've already done it, and it could be less than that, you can follow, or it could be more, but it, again, given you some history, it hasn't gone over that, uh, before. So they're just, remember, we're a nonprofit entity, we're not paying stockholders, we're not, we've got two employees in the whole company, and we've got, uh, an energy consultant, we've got a utility consultant, we've got a marketing person, and we've got a, uh, a person that, that tends to the, the tax, that you're probably familiar with Kate and Bollish, and those people operate on a set fee, so, that's, that's, and we're, believe me, if you wanna listen to our budget, uh, hearing, uh, and you're welcome to, uh, you can see what the budget is and, you know, what they spend the money on, and listen to, listen to the comments, and listen to, uh, how the consultants explain how they held their costs and check, so, that's all something you can do, it's totally transparent. So, uh, let me explain the particip- participation resolution, if you're inclined to do that. What this would do is, you would be saying, you wouldn't be saying, you know, if I pass this, we're agreed to sign a contract, what it says is, you'll agree to let us help you provide pricing, just like we were already doing, uh, and we're saying, here's what the market is doing right now, do you want to clock in now or not? And if you say, no, I wanna sit here and watch it a little longer, that's fine, I did, we did that with Grand Prairie about a year ago, they sat for a couple months and watched, and they, they caught a dip, and that worked real well for them. So, and we're proposing that it would only last until the end of the year, so if you didn't, if you didn't like it, uh, the prices, then, you know, we're giving you the, the market prices, uh, it's not like we're pulling stuff out of thin air, the, the market is the market. So, but you get to decide when to lock in and at what price, of course, there, there has to be a market price, so you're subject to whatever the, the ups and downs of the market is, but right now, it's pretty low, and it's, and it seems to be staying low for a while, but, um, I don't know whether it's gonna, gonna go up or not, it's been kind of up and down, up and down, uh, but it's still been, still been pricing over the last year and a half. Uh, but anyway, the, the participation resolution author- would authorize two people, be they like the city manager and the mayor, or a couple, you know, people at the city manager, just two people, the reason we say two is, remember I said that the pricing is only open for twenty-four hours once you say lock in, and, and so we wanna make sure, because we don't know when that's gonna occur, and it, it could be that, uh, suddenly the market takes a dip and, uh, we can't find the mayor, or we can't find the city manager, we'd have that happen, so that's why we need two people, it, it, either one or the other, but designated by the council, and they can report to you whatever's going on, but, but you all would have somebody, so they don't have to come back to the city council, you know, with the price, uh, but the, the resolution also sets a, a no greater than cap in there, so that the negotiators have some authority to decide, and I've just picked something kinda out of, not really out of thin air, but kind of just looking, I'll give you a little bit of, uh, a little bit of leeway, and I said, three point seven seven five, I think, you could said something different, but I can tell you, I had one city that, um, when the market was like three point six, uh, back in, um, about May of twenty sixteen, they picked like three point six five, and, and, I'm sorry, they picked it right at three point six rather, so it was right there, and then it, then it bobbed up, and they weren't able to pull the trigger because the council hadn't given them any kind of, uh, leeway with it. So, I'm suggesting two people, and I'm suggesting a cap, again, that's not the price, uh, that's just the authority to gi- and give those people authority to move within, depending upon, you know, what the market's doing, to get you the pressed price, but you guys get to decide when you wanna do it and where it is when the market is, and I think that works because you got the ability to move- And I think that works because you got the ability to move right away on, on. And again, RFP is a, is a pretty slow process, and you're subject to, again, North Texas officials, people that put their RFP together, I think there was a lot of problems, and that's why they had to throw it out and start over again, because they, they really wouldn't listen to the way the market worked. And they, they got a whole lot of exceptions from people that did it and started over again. It cost them three months. So, but it's up to you. If you all want to do an RFP, we'd be glad to participate in it. But we want your business, we think you can do a good job, we're, we've got a good story to tell. We're, we're the most transparent organization you could find anywhere. And, and, and the, and the benefits of aggregation are great too, because, you know, sometimes there's bandwidth and stuff. But because you're in an aggregation group, it's not based on the individual, you know, how much load did you add, you added, you wanted to send. It's, it's really, as long as it doesn't exceed the band for the whole group. And so they've never gone over that. So do you all, do you all have any questions? I've done a lot of talking, and I, I deprive you of.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Duggan, appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have item 6B, presentation by ProStar Energy Services regarding proposed electricity pricing for a five-year term.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, staff. I am Steve Taff with ProStar Energy Services. I am here tonight to offer a very viable, very efficient and effective alternative to how your city secures and manages your power going forward. This other alternative option is, gives this group right here basically full control over what happens going forward for the city. The decisions, you're, you are the leadership of the decisions. ProStar's job, we support cities, counties, and communities all over the state. We actually were pricing 45 different contracts out today. In ERCOT, we signed contracts with, with our clients today in Texas, Ohio, and we actually signed a very nice opportunity contract for a city in New York. It's our job to be in the marketplace, representing you on a day-to-day basis, and then, most importantly, bring you information on a continuous basis that helps you decide the, the future, managing your forward financial risk for the city yourselves with the resource of ProStar Energy Services. Now, I guess one of the things that will need to be is who is ProStar? And I've, I've got just some information here, I'll pass out, and you guys can watch it while I talk. But, pass over to me, please. ProStar Energy is a group of energy industry veterans. There are 17 people in our company. We have over 300 years of energy experience inside those 17 people. Examples would be myself. I started in 1982 in Adlin, Texas, West Hacienda, Systromedia, CPL, climbing poles. I worked my way up through that company to a vice president of business development, and I was the one that took WTU into the murky waters of deregulation in 2001, 2002. But we have, we have people in our company, Bill Kyle, who worked for CPL, he started in 1979. Brian Lettberger, his dad was a CEO of HLMP. He's the one that converted HLMP's name to RELACT, which it is today. He's the one that oversaw the transition from the regulated utility into the deregulated format of RELACT Energy Center Point and their wholesale side. In 2003, WTU was purchased by Direct Energy, and we started from scratch again in constructing contracts, products, and customer service platforms, call centers, down to the actual products. We devised several different new products into the marketplace in '03, '04 for customers to utilize as we were in leadership positions at Direct Energy. We actually even had participation involvement with this final organization Mr. Duggan represents back in the mid-2000s. In 2009, I'm cutting through a lot of stuff here, so if we get back to anything you want to know about ProStar, I'm more than happy to talk about our company, I'm very proud of it. 2009, we had an opportunity to do something that we really wanted to do for several years through the 2000s. 2002 to 2000, actually, to today. The deregulated marketplace continues to be complex, continues to be imbalanced in the fact that your retail providers have all of the resources, they have all of the tools, they have all the training, they have everything on their side. And their only job is to try to acquire customers at the highest profit margin that they can in this open marketplace. We were in those leadership positions, most of our company that, that is for ProStar now. And all through those periods of years, we were very concerned about that imbalance, very concerned. We did everything we could from our perspective to try to help customers, even customers that had consultants, such as we are now, that were people that did not understand the business. In 2009, we had the opportunity to transition from the retail side of the marketplace, bring our skills, our experience, our knowledge, our background, all the things that we had done all the way before deregulation, through the inception of deregulation, and then running a very successful retail operation for eight years. We had the chance to, to move all of that to the customer side of the fence. And that's what we did, and that's when we created ProStar Energy Services. So based on that, our job is to represent, to level the playing field in the marketplace for the consumer. We do not operate in residential areas. We operate in what's called commercial industrial, non-residential communities. That includes everything. Our customer base is completely across the board. We have manufacturing, we have schools, we have cities, we have, you know, we have, we have medical facilities, which is currently, we're, we're very attracted to a lot of the medical facilities based upon some of the things that we've done over the last three years in that field. Our job is to negotiate the contracts, our job is to be in the marketplace, provide information, to guide our clients along the way.
What is the rate that you're offering?
Our rate today, that we conducted today, executable, locked in, total 3.68. No other, you've got your TSP, and that's it. Our fee is one mill, it's inside that, that, that price. And it doesn't change, it's locked into the contract. And our only concern coming in tonight was the uncertainty of whether we could start on January 1 of, of 2018. Based upon the agreement that you guys are under, that the city is under, it was very cloudy in talking with, trying to gather that, that's a very important matter as to when is your contract end date? Mr. Duggan talked about early termination penalties for anybody that exited contract early, which is always an issue and always a concern, and we'll make sure we do it right. That's our job. When it comes time for that switch to take place, we'll be right there, involved and engaged with the actual supplier that we have selected. We actually ran an RFP early on, about a month ago, for the city. It took us six, six business days to start and finish a formal RFP for the city. Of course, at that point in time, is when it became a point of, you know, the commission and, and Mayor needed to become involved in what we were doing. I think at that point in time, we were just trying to prove to our, to prove ourselves up.
What other fees are associated with, aside from the activation fee or other, I mean, as far as the 3.68 per, is that per kilowatt hour, I'm assuming?
Per kilowatt hour. That is part of a four-year agreement that started, that starts January 1 of 2019. We do not want to interfere with anything that contracts your position that you may or may not have been in with TCAP. Now, it would take us, by 11 o'clock tomorrow morning, I could have a full range starting in January 1 of 2018, now that we have clarification that that is the expiration date of your current agreement with TCAP.
Well, and I'm not clear, I don't know, maybe legal can step in there and talk about. I know that the GEXA contract ends in December, but not the TCAP? So I don't know how that plays.
Well, based on what I've seen and what I've observed from the prior speaker, I believe your contract ends December 31st.
Okay.
And I believe that's your obligation.
Of '17, sir?
Of this year, yes.
That, that is, that is an extremely important point inside any type of bidding or RFP that, process that takes place. We have a, an RFP that we designed that works very well for cities. It's, it's very comprehensive, but it's not so overblown that we get into the problems that Mr. Duggan mentioned a while ago. We've been on that side of the fence. We know what has to be provided to the retail providers to get what we need, and we know what not, what, what is going to be problems for the suppliers. We have, we have a contract and agreement in place to do business in ERCOT with 24 retail suppliers, the major ones that you all know, those who we do business with. How we do our, our position in which our fee is inside the contracted price. And in most, in most cases, that, that price is going to be lower than what an individual consumer can get over a home, and that's what our fee built into it. Reason being is because we've negotiated this agreement with these suppliers. And when we bring a customer or client to those suppliers, there's no overhead, there's no cost to acquire for them. Again, we've been on that side of the fence, we've said, in those leadership chairs, we know what is important, we know where the money is hidden over there. And that's our job to make sure that everything that goes inside that contract is what's good for the customer, and that anything that's not good for the customer is not in that contract. We've been very successful, we've got over 700 clients that we represent on a continuous basis, that's been since 2009.
Do you have any other municipalities in the area that you've signed up or they're pending that you're working with?
We have recently signed a very local county, and we took their price, of course, the market's in great shape, but it's been in great shape for a long time.
Right.
We took, we reduced their energy side of their cost just less than 50% of the cost of what they were spending. And the RFP process was a week, I mean, a week from start to finish. So that, it's what we do, it's our job. We, we intentionally left the retail supply side of the business because we wanted where we wanted, we wanted to be on this side. We were all raised with a culture of customers' keep, and deregulation very much tried to shatter any of the concept of, of that right there, and stacked everything up to the supplier side. When we had the opportunity in '09 to depart and, and come to the customer side and level play, that we jumped in. And we feel like that we, and one of the other sides of, of our goal coming in was to raise the bar of competency of a consultant position. There are good consultants out there, there are others that we call trump slammers.
So do you offer, if, let's say the price went down some more a year from now or two, let's say it went down to two cents, something like that. What do you offer in place of being in a, in a four-year contract? Could anything be done to take advantage?
Contract school question, Mr. Duggan. Contracting is all about risk. Where is the risk? Is it the risk on the supplier side, is the risk on the customer side? If you're putting all the risk on the supplier side of the equation with the all-in fixed price, then they're at, they're, they are on the hook to provide you that for the entire term of your, every candidate that you consume. You're not going to be able to negotiate that price through your term. It just, the only thing you can do is what was done back many years ago, which didn't work well, was the bling extend situation. And we've used it, it has a time and place, but it's only when the market dynamics fall into the right parameters that you should ever go on a bling extend. All right, back to, to the risk-reward side of things. There is a product that puts basically all the risk on the consumer. You can negotiate that one all through the contract. Now, it does have a variable rate. Variable rate over the last 18 years has always outperformed the, the fixed price. The variable rate has got a little bit of fluctuation to it, it's kind of a little locked up every once in a while. But if you write it, we show, we keep all the records daily, we're in the market now. We've got all the stats, that's what we use, statistics and, and graphs and statistics. The market, nobody has a crystal ball, but the market will give you tendencies and, and will give you signals. Signal we have right now is based upon the heat rate side of the pricing equation. And that is, out forward, in four years, we're seeing heat rates starting to increase. We're, we're watching the acquisitions of, of major wholesale purchases out forward, which is another signal that there's a lot of people think prices are going to want up. So they want to buy now, lock themselves in, take advantage of the market question that's that. But again, there's no, there's no crystal balls, but here are some of the reports that we send out on a frequent basis, just to get into the weeds on that. One guy that works with me closely was the vice president of the firm for another retail provider until three years ago. His job was to operate the pricing desk at this energy company. And then when contracts were signed, based upon the pricing that he generated, he would go to the wholesale market and hedge against those contracts. His job all day long was reading the market and then hedging to the wholesale side of the marketplace. We now have him as, as our director of market operations at ProStar. He's the one, that's all he does. He watches, he guides our folks, he guides me. And I bring that information to the clients. Those that, especially those that are in a transactional position, such as you guys are. Mr. Duggan's right, now is a good time to be, it really is. If, if, if we, if we'd been working for you in February, we would have asked you, we would have recommended and asked you to highly consider going out in February. But if, if we had not, obviously, we, if we had not done a thing, the next thing we would have told you is, was wait till August. For the last three years consecutive, there has been a dip, a significant dip in the market in the period of August to September. Back in the old days, that was completely adverse to the way you stopped operating. You didn't want to be contracting in the summer, everything was up, it was inflated, you wanted to shoulder periods of time before you would ever do any type of transactions. But the dynamics. But the dynamics of the market have changed. I can explain to you exactly why it has fallen off the last three years, and it's actually doing it right now. Now, gas is taking a numerous direction against the heat rates. That's automatic, that always happens. Gas goes down, heat rates go up. Heat rates go down, gas goes up. You catch it at that balancing point. February and, and August, the last three years have been the chills points in time to contract out forward, and that's what we said today. Look, that's what we do, that's our job. If you study the market, and we may be old-school students, but we, we study the market on a daily basis. It's our job, it's our responsibility, and we're accountable to our clients to help them manage their forward financial risk, which is really all that, in a deregulated environment, that's all it is. And getting into some of the other things that you've done in the past, the only thing I can say there is, is the deregulated market is a fluid marketplace, it's like the stock market, it's changing all the time, changes daily, sometimes quite a bit. It's been very stable for the last three or four years now. We have a little bit up, a little bit down, all due to various different tendencies that are taking place. The one thing that we always counsel our clients on is elephants do not sprint, and in this marketplace, you better be able to sprint, because if you don't, you get your back into the wall and you get into positions that you don't want to be in. The market starts dictating to you instead of you dictating to the market. And that's, again, where you, you've been for the last several years, is the market basically dictated to, to you, where the city is going to be in your position. And we say, let's change that dynamic, let's let, let's dictate to the market, let us bring you the information, the data, the insight, and our opinions and recommendations. And at the end of the day, it's, it's your call as to what you want to do, the strategy you want to put in place, the type of products you want to go to, fixed price, hybrid, index, L and P, real-time, day-to-day. We did all that for state, and it's worked out tremendously well, a mixture. But most of those products are ones that we designed back in '02, '03, and '04, so we know every piece that goes into those products, how they operate on the backside, and what the contract language needs to say to make sure it works right. That's who Prostar is, that's what we do, day-to-day. We love to work for the city. Again, the, the setup for data and information has already taken place. We first took this out a month ago to, I believe, 11 retail suppliers, which is exactly, deregulation is built for competition, and that's exactly what we did. We pit those guys against each other, we know most of them, a lot of those people are better workforce, embarrassed functions in the past. We know how to drive the price to where we want it to be, we know how to fit the contract language to what fits to every client, and every client's different. What, what happens to somebody up in the north zone, a little bit different than what happens down here, you have, no, you have congestion that occurs down here. One of the things that you guys need to know about so you can decide how you want to address it from, from your leadership position in the city, and those are all the things that we bring. So, with that, if there's any questions, market, Prostar, I'd be happy to.
Any questions?
Good.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is 6C, discussion and possible action to authorize city staff to draft a request for proposals for provision of the city's electricity needs.
Not based on consultation with Legal, because the contract's ending, the recommendation is that we go out for RFP.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion.
I'll send a motion, ma'am.
We have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose. Who carries next is item 6D, discussion and possible action to authorize city staff to draft a request for proposals for the city depositary bank.
Mayor Commissioner, we have a key contract, we have a current contract with the National Bank, it's been years, it's coming up for the end of year, November, so we are authorized requesting authorization to, because of proposals, this is in accordance with the law code 54.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Send a motion.
I have a second by Commissioner Ramirez, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose. Who carries next, item 6E, discussion and possible action to authorize city staff to draft a request for proposals for employee health and dental insurance coverage.
Your 6E, most recently, TML raised their insurance rates by 15%, and so we're just looking to see if we can do better. I know we're with TML, but I believe we have the duty to give them a 30-day notice if we so find that there's a better deal out there. And all we're looking at is for the employees to make sure we get a better price for them on insurance coverage, not to lessen the coverage or anything like that, we're looking for equal coverage.
Very good. I'll send a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second by Commissioner Garza, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose. Who carries next is item F, discussion and possible action to declare certain equipment as surplus, 6F.
Chief? I saw your toys in there, that list.
Yes, we have a, two home cycles and a 2007 car repair that we're going to get out of commission, the bikes already have required too much maintenance and certification that would be a problem to get them back going, and that 2007 car repair is already out of the, it already did because it had to.
The cost is prohibited.
Service?
Money?
Sorry?
What requires?
Service?
The car or the bikes?
You said the, the bikes require a service, or what moves here?
They require a service, both of them. The electric bike, you know, we'd have to get it serviced, and we can't service it here, and the BMW also needs servicing. In order for us to get them going, we'd have to get them, the guy certified, and that takes a week, each, so, they'd be, they need maintenance that would cost us a little bit of money to get it off.
Will these bikes ever used at all, patrolling the city? I don't recall or seen them out there patrolling.
They were used in the beginning, but it was about, maybe about three years ago, three, four years ago. So they've been standing there, you know, we can do something with them.
And once, basically, through as far as surplus, what do we do with them, or what, what's the intent?
Auction.
Yes, we'll go to auction.
Hey, it's a BMW, sir.
Yeah. All right. What's, what, what, how big is that bike?
It's not a very big bike. It's, it's.
It's not made for you.
Wait, it's a weight limiter.
That's a new one.
All right, we have a motion to approve, we have a second. Who is the second?
The second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Who carries next, 6G, discussion and possible action to reject the bids received June 28, 2017 for the lift station project. 6G.
Yes, as you're aware, we went out for bids on the lift station project, they came back in with the costs associated with them, we're only to be, be able to fulfill the improvement of four of them. And so at this time, considering the way they came in, we couldn't get a better deal, we did try a couple of things in trying to modify the approach, but we just couldn't get there, and this is coming back with discussions with Water Development Board and TCQ, okay? So, at this time, in order to basically go forward and, and start over, we would have to reject the bid at this time, and all we're trying to do, a lot of what came in on the bid was proprietary, and that's why the price is high. So, we're proposing that we redesign the project so that we can go out and get a better deal so we can stretch our dollars, and hopefully get more lift stations done instead of the four that are set out to be the way it is today.
All right. We reject the bid.
Okay, we have a motion to reject the bid by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose. Who carries? Next is item H, discussion and possible action to authorize the redesign of the lift station project and the rebid based on the redesign.
And this is part of the process, and as its bids are being rejected, we would have to go through a redesign, and this redesign process would ensure that we gather all input from the required staff that support those lift stations, and making sure that the needs of the city are being met to make sure we maximize those dollars and get the best product or solution in place. So the redesign process is an essential component to get started.
To redesign, how much is it going to cost us?
Uh, we don't know, I don't know, Mr. Chapa, you want to comment on that?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I think that's the next item in the agenda, a part of it. What we want to do for the redesign is meet with the staff, Mr. Yerba, specifically also, so that we can know exactly what will be changed, what equipment and so forth, structurally, electronically, mechanical, and that way, once we have each one identified, then we can give you a better proposal to be fair to you and fair to us. So we'd like to come back with that price for you as soon as, we try, we'd like to do it within, by the end of next week to have it all done. But at this time, we're not ready because we have not met to discuss what changes are in this one.
Looking, looking at the original contract back in 2013, I think it was 127,000, I guess for the design of this, this project.
Total project.
Total project.
The design itself, because it's broken into different components, the design itself is, I think it was, I believe it was 101,000, something like that, for the design. At this point, we have the information that was gathered from staff as far as what, the fuel, that's what takes along, it's what flows are coming in, what's the size, what pumps, what equipment's available, so we take that and redesign everything.
My question was, well, what, why did it take so long? I mean, it took about four years to get to this point. I mean, we gotta take another four years to redesign and get, again, get to the point right now?
There is some issues with, we, we make the application, then there is a submittal to the state, it's approved, and then we start a design. There is, per se, no time limit, and we did have another engineer on the project. After staff complaints, we replaced them, I took over the project, and within six months we were bidding the project, and we're back to redesigning. And again, like I've said before, we designed it based on what's standard, but now we're looking at saving costs, some money, and that's where we're at now.
Will you say staff recommendation?
We had gone out for these designs a long time ago, I remember, asking Lisa Vez for the plans, you know, since two years ago, I believe, or somewhere around.
Yeah, and like I said, we removed that prospect engineer, we took over and had it done. And again, if you look at the bids that we received, got six bidders, three lowest bidders were within the budget that we have now to go out to award it. The plans were approved by the state, the plan will work, however, what we're trying to do now is save money. So, you know, I don't know if you have a bid tag with you, but it'll show you that the top, the lowest three bidders were within the budget for four lift stations, not all of them, because we didn't have enough. Two lift stations that were even built, Kramer, which is on 755 and, and the one at the county park. Those two lift stations, one each, of what the plans are represented, they're on one with the lower deck, and the other one is on top. There are two different types of lift stations that are on the plan right now, so, again, the plans, our proposing lift stations have already been built for the city, and those came in about five, six hundred thousand of those, and we did those a couple of years ago.
Could design the one on solo?
We did.
But, but who was the, who was the engineer?
Uh, he was still Mario, because back then, we were allowed to do two of them because of the needs, and then there was some apartments coming in on 3167, we didn't bid Solis and Garcia's, that project didn't go through, so then we went back. Now, we've been way before this bulk, this group was done, we had bid Kramer and Park, and then we did Solis and Garcia, but that package never went forward because the apartments were never built. So we've been changing plans back and forth, and this is the last attempt, the latest attempt so far.
And at this point, what is the plan to avoid the pitfalls of before? What is your plan? So then go out?
I mean, on the next, the next item is to amend the contract to do the redesign. I would recommend we consult with our attorney, because we're starting over.
So in a sense, it's starting over.
This is, we're starting over again.
Because this redesign is going to address issues that, it's like here I'm reading about the gassers, gases, dangerous gases, gases, I can't even, anymore.
Right. I think I said in that meeting, Mayor, and, you know, I strongly recommend what Mr. Perez is saying, to consult with the attorney. I'm troubled, there's a lot of questions, and it sets some doubt, you know, in my conscience, you know, how long this project has taken place, why it's taken so long, and, and now the cost, and, and the people that, that we're having a conversation with, kind of put a dot dot in my, in my head, and I think the commission is thinking the same way, you know, we should talk to council and make sure that we're doing the right thing, that the taxpayers' monies are being spent the right way.
We've discussed with the TCQ, the process and the redesign approach, their, their understanding, and their patient, they said, you know, if it takes you two months to go do what you need to do, as long as you let us know what's, the progress of this project. And so they know that there's effort behind it, and it's not going to be by the next day or the next week. They understand it's going to take a couple of months probably by the time we get back to what we need to be, to go out and bid and get those bids awarded.
Again, we have the opportunity, if we go the redesign, to address any potential concerns or issues that have been.
Yeah.
As a result of this process.
Yes.
And at the same time, make sure we include all the staff that needs to be included to have input in this, I'm assuming that's going to be our process, right?
Yes, sir. Lessons learned.
Lessons learned from this, and include all the staff members that are actually going to be operating and working in these lift stations.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so do we have a motion at this time? As per the recommendation, the staff is to recommend the redesign of the lift station.
You know, we need to start with the redesign, and then aye being the redesign.
Which is item H, to authorize the redesign of the lift station project.
I'll send a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to, to approve or authorize by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Garza, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose. Who carries next is item 6I, which is discussion and possible action to amend the contract with Melvin and Kant Incorporated to include the cost of redesign of the lift station project.
And that's where the attorney comes in, that we need to consult with him and how we go forward.
So there will be no action at this time?
Yeah, I suggest at this time table it, and it has to be, well, the lady posted has to be.
Right.
Okay.
You need a motion for that?
An motion to table then at this point, or no action?
Uh, no action.
No action? Going to be no action, item 6I. Next is item 7, contracts and agreements, letter A, we've already completed that one, letter 7B, discussion and possible action to approve the lease agreement with Melissa G. Perez, DPA Vintage Willow by Melissa for rental space at Fort 10 East Main Street, Suite B.
We are awaiting Ms. Perez or Mr. Perez to come in so they, they can sign the agreement and therefore present it to you. Ms. Peña attempted multiple times for the last couple of weeks, and I believe, I don't know if they're out of town or what.
She said they want opening the business, but that she would send Mr. Perez to come sign it. He hasn't come in.
So we'll continue to follow.
Okay, so.
No action?
Next, we have item 7C, discussion and possible action to approve agreement contract for con- for consulting engineer services with Gilbert J. Gavran Engineering, Rio Delta Engineering, seven C.
The contract's come up, uh, we recommend that we approve the agreement as they are city engineers.
Okay. Your recommendation, do we have a motion at this time or any questions?
I'll send a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Who carries? Next is item eight, executive session, chapter 551, Texas Government Code, section 551 dot 071, consultation with attorney, it's items A, B and C. Uh, consultation with city attorney regarding legal aspects of SB 1004, consultation with city attorney regarding cause number DC 17134, and consultation with city attorney regarding car cause number DC 17 dash 343. This time it is approximately 8:13 PM. We're back from executive session, it is 8:26 PM. Moving on to item nine, eight, discussion and possible action directing city attorney to respond to passage of SB 1004.
Mayor, I, I move that we authorize a city attorney to draft a...
Resolution.
A resolution addressing SB 1004.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll send a motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Who carries? Next item nine, B and C, there's no action on these two items. And at this time, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll send a move.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. We have a second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Meant to adjourn. It is 8:27 PM.